If you'll stand as you're able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, you have the agenda in front of you. There are a couple of things that I would like to point out. One, we have moved the citizens' request to speak on non-agenda items to the middle of the agenda. So for those who may be joining us this evening who want to speak, please note that that comes in the middle of the meeting. Also, there is one amendment that was not made to the agenda in front of you, and that is in item 11, under adjourning to closed session. Strike the language in the second to the last line to confer with legal counsel for school board concerning strategy, et cetera, et cetera, to that last semicolon. So with that one modification to the agenda, is there a motion to approve as amended?
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
All right, a motion by Lynn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The amended agenda stands. So the next item on our agenda, it looks like we have a fair amount of student and staff recognition. Sandy?
Yes, we've had a lot going on at the end of the school year. Our first recognition is in regards to our Destination Imagination Global Teams. This year, we had three, I repeat, three teams go to globals. So first step is going to regional competition, which this year was held in Spooner. From there, you go to state competition, which was in Stevens Point. And we had three teams selected at that point to go to globals, which took place May 25th through 28th in Knoxville, Tennessee. And our eighth grade team not only went and competed, they took first place. So I'm going to invite Liz Milanofe and the eighth grade team. And Liz, you can help me out. We have three teams, as I said, the first one is a fifth grade team from Holton. Connor, Ethan, Michael, and Seth were coached by Michelle Lehman. Then our eighth grade team, and then we also had another eighth grade team coached by Don Eggerberg, Sophie, and Ian. So I think we have members of our final team here with us. So Liz, I'll give it over to you.
The other two teams, the Holton team and the middle school team of Sophie and Ian, couldn't be here tonight. But I brought part of the other eighth grade team that took first. And I'm going to let them introduce themselves, but I'm going to be leaving at about 7:15 to go to an event at the high school. And what I wanted you to know that's pertinent to what you'll be talking about later is that DI is project-based learning. And these kids are in it, and our district has excelled at it because they're ready for it and they want it. It's learning that you can sink your teeth into. It's three-dimensional. It's like a sculpture versus a drawing or a painting. It's something you can walk around and look at and think about for four or five months. And so, that having been said, I think just the success of our district, it's been five global finals titles and three separate teams. I think that success indicates that it's time that we bring it to the rest of the students who haven't had a chance to experience it. So these guys were on a team called Spinning a Tail, or that did a challenge called Spinning a Tail. They had to research energy cycles, and then they had to write a story about one of those energy cycles. They chose the nitrogen cycle. They chose to write their story about a dysfunctional family of elephants, elements. Oxygen, hydrogen, they can tell you who they were. But they also had to have three acts in their story, and they had to be able to tell the story, starting with any of the Act One, Act Two, Act Three. And it had to be a circular story, so it had to finish where it started. So that was basically what they did. And I'm going to let them introduce themselves and tell you what they like about DI.
I'm Chris Lewenberg, and DI has just been a wonderful experience because it helps us discover creativity, not only in a way of writing and in art and, you know, technical stuff and everything like that. It's a great program.
I'm Natalie Wareham, and I have to say, since third grade, I've been doing this. And I love how you get to be creative and like problem-solving stuff, but also you get to meet great friends. And it's such a good experience.
I'm Zach Offner. I've been in it since like fourth grade. And I don't know, I just like it because it's really fun and it keeps me out of trouble.
I'm Clara Milanofe, and I've been doing DI for nine years. And what I like about it is that you get to meet great people and have just tons of fun. And you're learning while you're doing it.
Thank you.
Just a comment. Project-based learning is something that we're looking at in terms of the new high school program. So I think this is a great testimony to the value of that type of education. So congratulations. And I'd also mention that, I don't know if everybody understands, the scope of this accomplishment. This is a global competition. Can you give me an idea of who else was there? Were there foreign countries represented and so forth?
Okay, so there was Poland. That was one of the other countries. We actually got to have a buddy team from Korea, and we got to walk them through Knoxville, American culture, stuff like that. Actually, she's wearing a shirt that we got from our Korean buddies. And we, they had Mexico. They have a lot of countries there.
Between 14 and 20 other countries typically every year. They tend to change, but quite a few Korean teams this year. So, and some of those kids perform their challenges in their own, in their language. And some of them do them non-verbal because of language barriers. And I think there were...
I'm sure, 70-something?
Fifty-nine or 60, something like that, from all around the world. So that was who they had to, you know, and score better than.
I would like to recognize Liz for her leadership in moving DI forward. We are where we are because of the parent leaders that we have, who have spent an enormous amount of time and commitment and dedicated to this program to allow our students to have this level of experience, learning experience. So I know, Liz, I think you've been there from the beginning, and our results are reflective of your work as well. So thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next, I'm going to invite Tom Klett, tech ed teacher at the high school, along with his team. There are now, and you may have read this in the Hudson Star Observer, there are now three safe disposal options for old or unneeded medications and prescription drugs in the Hudson area. And in Hudson, those sites are located at the Hudson Police Department, the North Hudson Police Department, and St. Croix County Sheriff's Department. And a lot of that thanks goes to this team right there, along with a few others I know I met the other day, that they put some energies into creating one of those boxes and installing it. And I know here also is retired Hudson teacher Dolly Quails, and her husband Gail have led the efforts to see those drop-off boxes installed. And so it's, one, is that the medications are properly disposed of, and, two, that they're not improperly disposed of and end up in our water system especially. So there's kind of a win-win here for our area. And the Hudson Police Department site was designed, constructed, and installed by members of Hudson High School teacher Tom Klett's technical education class. So Tom, if you'd like to give us a little bit more information?
I'm Mike Anderson, and I didn't prep a speech. I didn't think I'd be speaking, but I'm glad I had the opportunity to help out with that thing. It was a nice learning experience, and he's a good teacher.
I'm Derek Soljak, and I also, you know, didn't prep a speech or anything. And yeah, it was a good experience learning how to do different things and...
I'm Danny Waller. Helped out with it. Good learning experience.
I'm Sean Lockney, and it was also a good learning experience.
I'm Shane Muller, and I did most of the welding on the box, and it, well, I did. And it taught me how to TIG weld stainless steel and things like that, which was a very good experience for me, so.
Good job. I am Tom Klett. I'm the Production Metals Welding Instructor at the Hudson High School. Yeah, these were, these are five of the, what did we have, 17, 18 kids in the Production Metals course. Dolly had called me on the phone and asked if we wanted to do this project. And with the help of Niro, who donated a lot of the stainless steel for the projects, we welded it, went down to the North Hudson Police Department, installed it down there, along with the help of the city workers. The city of Hudson, okay. And Marty was there, walking us through the steps, coming up to the high school, checking on the work. I wanted to make sure it was appealing and everything that he wanted down there. But the guys did a great job. After that one was done, then we moved on to the one at the St. Croix County Sheriff's Department with Officer Schultz. And we just more or less built them the box, dropped it off, and they installed it, which was okay. But it's hard to cram all that stuff in in a two-hour time period. We took a little in-house field trip down to the police department and cut the sheet rock out, and hopefully we wouldn't hit anything, and everything went real well, and it's a very positive thing, so thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Turn it on. Next, we'd like to recognize the 2011 National Council of Teachers of English Young Writers Program. And I believe, because I know he was just here, Christopher is going to come back up. Abby Schmidt, maybe? Lindsay Worm. There she is. Good, good, good. We have three eighth graders that are being recognized as promising young writers. Across the nation, there were 380 students that were nominated for the 2011 program, and 111 were chosen as outstanding writers. In the state of Wisconsin, there were eight students selected, and Hudson has three of those young writers in our midst, so we're very proud. They received, I understand, certificates of recognition that were awarded to them as winners. And I didn't ask you to, I know, to speak directly about this, but I don't know if you want to talk about what's your topic or your prompt was?
I wrote, um...
Pull the mic down.
I wrote about my dog and kind of what he thinks about when we're gone. Yeah, he's my inspiration for a lot of things, so.
For my first, they, there were two writing pieces. One was like, one was just anything, and for that one, I wrote a Western, inspired by Louis Lamour. My dad has like a box of a few hundred of those, so. And then my other one, it was about finding the real you, I think it was. And for that one, I did sort of an introspective, inception-ish, you know, sort of thing. So that was sort of interesting.
And I know Dan Koch was really pleased as well, because we have three students, one from each house, which also just recognizes that the whole team's working together to produce such outstanding writers. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
And now I'm going to ask Claire to come back up. We've got some double winners here tonight. Fifteen students have been selected as members of the 2011 National Geographic Kids Hanon Explorer Challenge Expedition. And to compete for that Explorer Challenge, students were invited to write an essay of 300 words or less, telling of their explorations and the interesting things they have found along the way. And a panel of National Geographic experts chose 15 students, and they had obviously some judging criteria. And the explorers will now be, those 15 will now be equipped with a Nikon camera and also will be going to the Cayman Islands as a reward. And Claire Milanofe of Hudson is one of those winners. And on the site, if you go to the National Geographic site, they have an excerpt from your essay, Claire. So maybe you just want to talk a little bit about what you wrote as well.
Okay, what you were supposed to do was write about how you explore in nature, how you like explore your surroundings. And so I just wrote about how I like to go hiking, like in Willow River State Park. And I like to go explore like tidal pools in New Hampshire and Maine, and how I like to go around in the Willow Falls and look for small animals and stuff.
Again, congratulations.
Congratulations, Claire.
All right, spring athletics. So I'm going to ask Stephanie DeVos, our athletic director, to step forward. And I know she has lots of representatives here, including Mr. Peters.
Good evening and thank you for having us. We've had an exciting spring. And for the last time, I'd like to introduce to you Ben Peters, who will be doing the spring wrap-up for us.
Everyone, it's that time of the year again. We had an amazing spring that just added to our absolutely excellent season, our entire year of sports. I'd like to start out tonight with boys' baseball, coached by Ryan Hoopert. Their overall conference record was seven and five. They tied for third in conference. Their overall record, which included non-conference games, was 10 and 9. We had two all, or second-team all-conference team members, Brett Steinwagner, who was a pitcher, and then Ben Christiansen, a senior, who was an outfielder. We had two all-conference honorable mentions, which were Austin Lenzin and Kellen Pearson. Next, we have the boys' golf team, and we have some of the team members and one of our coaches to talk about their season, which was extremely successful.
All of a sudden, they're bashful. They sure weren't like that on the buses, or the van rides, I'll tell you that. I was hoping they'd be quiet coming back from state. We had an excellent year. We're looking back to last year. We did pretty well last year, getting to sectionals and had a really good team. Most of these players were playing most of that year, and were part of that team. And ended the season on a down note, not getting to state last year. And these kids came in and said, "Next year, next year." And so we started the season out. It showed that through the summer, they were working really hard last summer, and they came into the season playing excellent. As the season went on, we won just about every tournament we played. Some of these tournaments were 20 teams, 15 teams, 18 teams, playing some good competition around the state of Wisconsin and some in Minnesota. Continued on winning the conference for the second straight year. So those are some pretty good accomplishments against some really good teams. Went on to regionals, and even though you can be the top four in the regions to move on to sectionals, they won the regional here in Hudson. That was a great accomplishment there. And then we decided, well, we got to keep going. We went into the sectional over in Wausau. And even though you can be in the top two teams, we won that one with by 13 or 14 strokes on a very, very, very windy day. And it just showed how hard these kids worked and what they can do when they put their mind to it. And they just battled the whole day, and everybody else sort of fell apart while we got stronger and stronger, and it was just great. So this was really the first time I'd been to state with a full team, and it was just a great time. Went down to state with some pretty high expectations. Finished the first day seventh place, three or four strokes out of the top five. And second day, we played even better, got stronger and stronger, and finished fourth in the state this year. I also found out, checking the records and talking to an old coach, that is the best finish any boys' golf team at Hudson has ever taken. So I congratulate these gentlemen. And the players I have in front of me here is junior Ben Lewis, senior Jack Holland, senior Jeremy Salantin. And some of the other players that are not here are senior Luke Burbach, senior Travis Hall, and junior Brody Belland. Those are most of the players, oh, I'm sorry, I meant senior Matt Graze. Those seven players are the players for the varsity this year that were part of all the matches that we had. And we're looking forward to another good year next year. So thank you.
Congrats on a great season. Also, we had first-team all-conference member Luke Burbach, who I believe is going on to play college ball in Florida, right? Oh, anyways, awesome. And then Ben Lewis also had second-team all-conference. Next, we have the girls' soccer team and their coach, John Knudsen, to talk about their also great season. Welcome up.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I couldn't be more proud of a group of girls. Coaching the soccer team this year was a very enjoyable experience. So Superintendent Mary and Athletic Director Stephanie DeVos, thank you for that opportunity. I've got Morgan Karas here, Captain Morgan Karas, and also Captain Ashley Johnson, so they'll say a few things.
This year, our slogan was "We Run as One." It was actually more of a philosophy than a slogan because our team chemistry was terrific. We had a memorable, enjoyable, and competitive year of soccer. While starting with eight of nine games on the road and struggling a bit to start the season, we finished the season strong, winning five in a row in eight of our last 10 games before a loss in the second game of regionals to the number-one seed, River Falls. Our final record was 10, 7, and 1. What? One thing we did this year was integrated younger soccer girls into our varsity program by having them serve as ball girls at our home games and then play on the field at halftime, and join us after the game for our post-game talks and stretching. After that, we gave them each a soccer bag tag that read "Hudson Raider Soccer 2011, We Run as One." The kids seemed to really like it, but we did too, as we got to meet younger soccer players who will someday be on the field playing like we were. I hope they continue that program in the future with younger soccer players.
Hi, I'm Morgan. One of our goals this year for JV2, JV1, and varsity was to build team continuity with all the players and coaches from the top to the bottom. So we worked often, and we practiced together. Yeah, our coaches like shared preparation and activities so everyone could learn and be on the same page. This year, we had two honorable mention players, senior Logan Noble and sophomore Alyssa Muller. And we had a second-team all-conference player, Ashley Johnson. And we also had Player of the Conference and First Team All-Conference Paige Omen. She's also a captain. More than half of our graduating seniors this year, including Ashley and I, are expected to try out and play soccer in college next year. We feel that the underclassmen coming back are a good group of girls, and this upcoming freshman will do great at Hudson High School next year.
Congratulations.
We really had three key areas to start the season. Number one, we wanted to re-instill the passion for soccer with a lot of the girls. Last year was a bit of a tough year for a number of different reasons. And so re-instilling the passion for soccer was one of my main goals. The second thing was re-instilling faith with the parents with the Hudson High School soccer program. And third was that these girls in our team would represent the school with pride. And I think not only did we meet the goals, but we exceeded our expectations. So thank you all.
All righty, next up, we have the results from the girls' softball team, which I don't believe we have any representatives from tonight. So they were coached by Dan Rasmussen. They placed third in conference with a record of seven and five, and their overall record was 13 and 6. They finished their season as regional champs, which was quite a big accomplishment. The team did very well this year with one honorable mention, Maya Tribold, two second-team all-conference members, Sidney Berger and Lexi Smith, and then two first-team all-conference, Devon Ducharme and Kenja Wittes. They had a great season. Let's give them a round of applause. Next up, we have the results from boys' tennis, coached by Dave Dahl. They placed third place in conference with a record of three and two, and an overall record of eight, three, and one tie. They tied for second in the BRC tournament. And we also like to congratulate Max Hoxford for qualifying in state for, I think it's his third year in a row. He'll have his final senior year next year, which he'll probably go to state again and hopefully do very well. We had two second-team all-conference members, which was a doubles team, the number-one team, which was Andy Mitchell and Alex Lashick, both seniors. And then we had a first-team all-conference member, which was Max Hoxford. Let's give them a round of applause for their great season. Next up, we have boys' and girls' track teams, who were absolutely phenomenal this year. Another great season for them. We'll welcome up the boys' first, and Coach Klett, who will talk about their season, and then the girls will be next.
You got to go first? All right, so boys' track this year, we had a great season. We had four school records broken. Triple jump, I broke that. Pole vault, which was broken by Mike Congdon. The four-by-one was broken with Tyler Smirchna, Tucker Malika, Mike Congdon, and DeAndre, Brandon DeAndre. And then the four-by-two was broken by Nick Jorgensen, Will Johnson, Tucker, and Smirchna. So we had a very successful season in breaking records. We took first at regionals, and we lost by half a point at sectionals, which could have been made up easily. I don't know what else to say. We had a great season, yeah. Hello again. We started the year with 92 boys. I think we ended up at the end of the year with 87 or so. I would say the highest numbers that we've ever had in Hudson. To summarize the boys' and girls' program a little bit, we'll have the girls come up and introduce themselves later. Boys' and girls' conference champs, boys' and girls' JV conference champions, boys' and girls' regional champions, girls' sectional champions, boys' runners-up. And girls got fifth, sixth at state, sixth place at state, boys like tied for 34th. Very successful program that we have going on. Very happy with the kids and to have 90-some boys and 70-some girls is just outrageous. We freak a lot of schools out. We pull in with three school buses and just keep unloading and unloading, unloading, and they get all scared. But it is good to go around to a lot of the smaller track meets that they want good competition. And we offer that. A lot of schools like New Richmond, Osceola are good competition for us. So in the area, we've been really successful with the track program, and I hope to keep that going, so.
Congratulations.
I hope that keeps going. If we could have the girls come up and introduce yourselves, there's some of the girls. We had 12 boys go to state in various events, and we had 12 girls. And some of the girls are here to tell them what event you were in, your name, your age, in general.
Okay, my name's Katie Thielman. I went to state for the four-by-one and the four-by-two. And during my season, I was also an open 100 runner.
My name's Jamie Lindstrom. I am a thrower. I throw shot put and discus. I won state in the shot put and got 12th in discus. I also got first in the two-mile.
Okay, I'm Taylor Stefan. I'm a sophomore. I throw, I throw, I'm a thrower. I throw shot and disc. I went to state this year, and I got 15th, and yeah, and just shot put, so, yeah.
I'm Erica Haff. I'll be a junior next year. I ran the four, what? I ran the four-by-100 and four-by-200 relay with Katie. And for the four-by-200, we got second at state, and for four-by-one, we got third at state. And I also run the open 200 during the season. Oh, and other two relay members are Erica Tip and Angela Tip. They're twins, and they're not here.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of recap the season. As the team for girls, we did awesome. We got, we were conference champs, regional champs, and sectional champs as a team. We've broken many school records and class records, both relays, four-by-one and four-by-two. And the open two, no, open one? No, open two, and then I broke the shot put record. It was a great season. Oh, yeah, and Casey Fall won, broke the school record. Tied it, tied the class record. She tied the junior class record in pole vault. She's a good pole vaulter. She's a junior. She's a good pole vaulter, she's a junior, so, okay, great. And it was a season, we had some ups, we had some downs, but overall, it was an awesome season, and, you know, Klatt's not gonna be here next year, and he was an awesome coach for the boys, but also for the girls and the throwers, so, round of applause for Klatt.
Thank you very much. Congratulations and thank you.
Can I say one more thing? Yeah, okay, so like, like Jamie was saying, the coaches are a huge part of her success, and a lot of them are leaving next year, and we're very sad to see them go, but it's been awesome to have them, and so I wanted to say thank you to all of our coaches.
There's only two that are leaving, so.
Also, one thing they left out, I believe, Jamie, were there four representatives that went down for that multi-state track competition? There was Senior Spotlight thing, Binsky and Jamer also part of that, as well as the Tip Twins and Michael Congdon. You guys want to say something quick about that?
It didn't go well for anybody, but, um, it was a fun thing to get down, get invited to go down to that Senior Spotlight meet, it just proved, we had five seniors go down, and I think we could add a few more if we would've had a few more nominated, 'cause we had a few people, like the thirty-two mile, I noticed there were only three people running it, and I think they could have five from the state. So I think Matt Rudquist was one of our thirty-two-hundred-meter runners, and he was, I think he could've probably taken first down there. Triple jump and long jump is what I went for, and I took like fourth for long, and I did not, I did not do very well in triples, so. And Jamie will tell you about the girls, how the girls did down there.
Okay, well, it was me and Eric and Angela Tip, and they sprinted, and I threw, and it was, it's, the Senior Spotlight meet is basically kind of a senior all-star where they take three states. It was Nebraska, no, not Nebraska, Illinois, Iowa, and Wisconsin, and they take the top seniors from each state and have you compete. And, so it was very competitive, and it was, it was a, I mean, it was awesome to be there, and it was an honor to be invited, and to have five Hudson kids athletes go. It was pretty cool. I took fourth in the shot, and eleventh in the disc, so, I mean, there were some great athletes there.
Mike, I forgot to say.
Yeah, um, I don't know, it, it was kind of a tough day, 'cause it was five hours away in Platteville, Wisconsin, it was on graduation, so we had to make a big car trip down there, but it was, it was a fun experience, and I'm honored that I was invited, and so.
I didn't spend the night down there either, so I drove down, five hours in the morning at three o'clock, so. And Mike Congdon, I forgot to say, he went down there also, he vaulted fourteen feet and took fifth, so. I mean, he had a, it was like a little bit below average day for him, but he still did very well down there, so.
Thanks, guys.
For the past three years, I just want to add this, I've been very fortunate to walk into the caliber of coaches as these two track coaches, and I know he was being a little on the shy side, and he's really not, we talk about the kids, but I've been very fortunate and blessed to have Tom Klatt as our head boys track coach, who has resigned this year due to time commitments, so, Tom, thank you very much, and we will dearly miss you.
So, that was our spring, spring results for all our teams, which did very well. I have some records for how our teams did, fall, winter, and spring. We had fifty-two all-conference first-team Raider representatives in the conference, fifty-one second-team all-conference members, and thirty-two honorable mentions. Pretty huge statistics when you think about it. We had two BRC Players of the Year, five BRC Champions, Boys Cross Country, Wrestling, both of those are like five-peat's or something, Boys Golf, and Girls and Boys Track, repeated again. We had several state competitors, Girls Tennis, Girls Golf, Boys Cross Country, Wrestling, Boys Swim and Dive, Girls, Boys and Track, Boys Golf, Gymnastics, Cheerleading, and Raiders. So we had a great season, and I expect us to only excel in the future. I have one more note, if I can find it. This Thursday, the sixteenth, the Raider Council would like to invite everyone to the Hudson High School Auditorium at six-thirty. We will be talking about a few points, the history of the Raider Pride Council, our mission, vision, philosophy of the Hudson School District Athletic Department, our committee updates and the purpose of each committee, of committee, facilities usage, fundraising updates, and a question-and-answer session for twenty minutes. The goal of the meeting was to have everyone leave with a better understanding of what Raider Pride Council is doing, and which will allow them to determine what they can work on in the future to improve our overall athletic department in Hudson. Please attend, it's gonna be a great event, and hopefully we can inform more of the community of what we are really about. I'd also like to thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you this year, and have a great rest of your summer. Thank you. Let's give a big round of applause for our sports again.
I would just like to add too, I've been very fortunate to have a student athletic ambassador leaders such as Ben Peters. He's been awesome, I will miss him dearly, and also just to wish him good luck this weekend at the US National Kayak Event that he's trying to qualify for, which more than likely he will, so good luck to him. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you. Ben, don't go anywhere yet, just hold on for one second. I, I think I can speak for my fellow board members in saying, we will miss having you come here from time to time, and tell us how sports in Hudson are doing, but we wish you the very best in the next chapter.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Tonight, we have members of the Strive staff here with us, I'd like to ask them to come up, please, if you would. And we're here tonight to recognize the Strive team for receiving a Showcase Program Award at the Twenty-Fifth Annual Careers Conference, held by the Center on Education and Work from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and this was back in January. We keep, kept trying to get this on the agenda here, but we've been busy.
We've been bomb-topping the agenda a few times.
The Strive program was recognized for exemplary or cutting-edge career development practices or programming. And tonight, we have Cindy Mitchell, Strive Coordinator, and Chris Carlson, teacher in Strive, who are in the, in the photo here that they didn't like so much, who accepted, they're gonna accept the award here and kind of talk about that, and talk a little bit about the highlights of the Strive program for us, so Cindy.
Hi, and we also have Nikki Benson here, she's been a Strive teacher in the program for eight years, this is her last year with us in the Strive program. I did prepare something, 'cause I have had some time to do this. We just, my calendar didn't match this calendar too a couple times. On behalf of the Strive team of teachers and students, I, we accept this recognition, and in addition to this award, we've been recognized over the last couple of years in the state. We spoke at the, in front of the graduation summit last year, we've also presented at conferences in the state, and we're getting, we're getting to be quite well-known, and we hope to go a little bit bigger nationally, is our goal, to be, to be doing something nationally soon. We had some highlights for our year, you have to apologize, I'm right in the middle of the least favorite part of my job, and that's the stats crunching, and I'm doing it as we speak, I've got some to report to, probably the best ones. This year, we served seventy-five students in the program, and we offered fourteen different courses. If we include summer school courses, Nikki, I haven't been home yet since seven this morning, we're teaching, and we're trying to get as many kids' credit recovered as we can, so if we include those, it's more like seventeen. This year, we were happy to graduate sixteen of our seventeen seniors, that's the most seniors we've graduated, and it's a ninety-four percent graduation rate, and that is well, well above anybody else's rates around. We lost one this year, and it, there's not much to say about that, but we did have a dropout this year, but we think he might come back next year, we're hoping. I'm working on attendance rate, we have a ninety-one percent attendance rate, our program goal is ninety percent, and so that's, that's good, and you'll be happy to hear that, right, Laura, 'cause we've been hitting that hard at our high school, is that attendance, especially those seniors. This year, we had a chance to do a, set a program goal, and did, we, we did some action research, and Peg Shoemaker helped us do this, and we looked at what's one thing that we might be able to do to bring overall results up, and we thought, let's hit that assignment completion rate. And as of about an hour ago, I think I, we, we shot for ten percent, which whoever thought we could hit that, that's too high, when we started at eighty-six percent last year, that's a big, we hit nine-point-six percent. We had a, we had a ninety-six percent assignment completion rate across all courses, that's, that's amazing with our kids. We raised five thousand dollars this year with our partners, the Hudson Rotary for Shelter Box, but I don't, I hope you all had a chance to see the birdhouses that were on display for the last two months in the community, and we built them with the Rotary's help, but the kids did all of that. We are accepting a Rotary grant tomorrow morning to continue our adventure learning partnership with Camp St. Croix that we've had longstanding, and I'm sure you've noticed, 'cause I think some of you up there own these too, this was our big entrepreneurship project this year. We started a project called Fab Tabs, and we started collecting these tabs as part of our girls' club. It started out just a little cool project, and we thought, hey, we might be able to do something with this. And to date, we have, since January, we have made over two thousand dollars on these, and we're selling them for three and five dollars, and we have them in a store in Hudson, and she keeps running out, we're selling them at Purple Tree right now, and she keeps running out, she just, we just filled another order, so we're gonna keep at it. We've almost saturated, saturated the market, we think, though, 'cause the elementary school kids are saying they, they have, but she, we're working on our other projects, Nikki, and I got some things we're working on in summer school right now for next year. Now, I'm going to get into the other section here. Our program has been around for seventeen years. During those years, amazing students and teachers have been a part of our family and part of our success. This year, we reached a milestone as a result of being awarded a large five-year alternative ed. grant from the Department of Public Instruction. Our school within a school model that our team has been building for many years was finally completed. We were able to expand to offer all our required classes at Hudson High School, and to increase our enrollment to reach approximately five percent of the high school's population, which is the, the population that they say that we should be reaching, approximately five percent. Our celebration was short-lived, however. This winter, we were informed that our grant we received was being eliminated after just one year as part of the governor's budget. This means that we'll be forced to decrease the number of students served, we're going to be eliminating courses, we've lost staff members that have made our program so successful, so it's with a heavy heart that I come here tonight to speak to you also. Our work's gonna go on, though, because it has to. Pure and simple, Strive's not about educating students, it's about saving lives. Tonight, I want to honor my fellow educators here, who have courageously, intelligently, and persistently worked with our students of promise for the last seventeen years in Hudson. And as you all know up there, numerous studies have determined that teacher effectiveness is the key to student success, above any other curriculum, technique, anything else, it's about what these people do here. And I want to read a few quotes from the National At-Risk Education Network that illustrates this. "The secret to a great program is not what you teach, but who teaches it. Every effective teacher usually possesses a sense of humor and great enthusiasm for the academic content and learning process. Educators of at-risk students are this and more. They are angels, and they are warriors who do not know the word quit." And some of you know me, and I'm the warrior here, and these are my angels, thank goodness I've got more angels than warriors, but we work together well, and you gotta be a little bit of both. "We try and fight failure as if it were a dragon, as it may well be. Above all else, we care deeply about our students' futures, and we're not afraid to show it." And so tonight, I ask you, our Board of Education, our administration, and our entire community to keep supporting our Strive program, so we can keep this model of excellence up for our students and be a model nationally. And the last thing I want to do, and I gave this to my team, I was, I was reading visual journals as part of my final, the sophomores do this, and I turned a page, and it just hit me at the right time, and this is a copy of a page from one of my students. I gave copies to my teachers, 'cause I wanted them to know that they matter. This is from Toni Turner, and she said, "Please use my name." I said, "May I read your poem?", and she said, "Yes." "Our teachers are our world, they spend more time with us than our family. They put up with all the things we throw at them, and they still stay. For the first time, I saw one cry, it broke my heart. I want the teachers to know that they are the reason I want to teach. They are kind, they are nice, so why do some people treat them like trash? When I grow up, no matter how hard it is, no matter how little the pay is, no matter if I lose a job on the second day, I want to be a teacher. I want to see the smiling faces of kids, I want to go far away and teach them my world. I want to tell them about my teachers from Strive, and how they never gave up on me, even when I did." So, I thank you for this.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like quickly to thank and congratulate the Strive staff for all the hard work, seventeen years, and it's been a strong program over those years, it'll continue to improve, as I see the innovation with the resources we do have to continue to build the program and support the students that we have in the program, and, and Hudson High School for the collaboration that happens with the rest of the staff and the administration to make Strive be what it is. It, it has to happen with the whole building, supporting the program, and, and I want to thank the rest of the staff at the high school for, for those efforts, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sandy?
Now, we'd like to ask Jody Gabriel to come up to the mic. University of Wisconsin River Falls softball coach, Jody Gabriel, has been named the Coach of the Year in the Wisconsin Intercollegiate Athletic Conference. Hopefully, you recognize Jody, she's a social studies teacher at Hudson High School, and she's in her fourth year as head coach of the Falcons. And in the team's five-four win over UW-Whitewater on May first, she won her one-hundredth career game. And so I'm not gonna read the whole piece, I'll let Jody talk a little bit about the season, but we're, we're just very pleased to have someone in our midst receive such a state honor.
Thank you. I was very honored to receive the award, because it's voted on by my peers, so the, the conference coaches are the ones who decide who, who will receive this award, so it felt very special to be receiving an honor that is awarded by your peers. And I really feel like the, the success belongs to the athletes this year. We started our spring trip, we went two and eight on our spring trip, so we had a long road ahead of us, and they decided to fight and set new goals and, and won the conference, won the conference tournament, went to postseason for the first time since nineteen ninety-four, so, they had the fight in them, and, and they fought hard, and it was, it was just a great journey.
Did you also play for River Falls?
I did. The last time we went to postseason in ninety-four, I was actually on that team, so, yeah, this is, it, it was kind of special because of that as well, yeah.
Congratulations, Jody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we are on the super attendance report section of the agenda, Mary?
Well, it's always hard to follow these recognition, and, you know, this school year, I'm talking about the end of the school year, and it's really ended with unprecedented results. You know, we have local achievements, we have regional achievements, we have state-level achievements, and we have global achievements as well, and, and national achievements, and it's both achievements from our students and our staff, things that we certainly are very, very proud of, and it demonstrates our, our students and the efforts of our staff, so that all students are learning at higher levels throughout all of our schools. And, you know, you could look back at the agendas that the board has had this spring, and just a few other examples, wonderful ones tonight, but the eighth-grade team that placed first nationally at the Nassau competition, they are in Nassau now, so they're not here, but I believe they're coming to the next board meeting, but that's a national competition in placing first as well, so another accomplishment. You've heard about our AP, state, and national recognition, that's a testament to our high school teachers, but really, our teachers all the way through the system, starting in elementary, who prepare our students. The success of our forensics team at state, the career and stunt team, sportsmanship award, certainly something we're extremely proud of, and the four Herb Cole fellowship winners from our teaching staff, only ones that we know of that actually had four in our region, so that's very significant as well, and I could go on and on and on, but it's unprecedented results that we're achieving because of the work of our teachers and administrators and support staff to support our students. So we're very fortunate in the school district ending the year on this very high note with this kind of accomplishment and work, so just really proud of what's happening and, and the work that teachers are doing. Moving on to graduation, graduation occurred Sunday night, and it was very, Saturday night, thank you. It was kind of a strange day, you know, the sun in and out, and rained the day before and so forth, and sitting up on the podium and looking out at the students, it was interesting, the sun came out and shone on all of them. So, three hundred and ninety-one graduating seniors, a little less than four hundred, last two years, we've had a little over. Last two years, we've had a little over 400 students, but very, very close to that. And this was Principal Laura Love's first graduation, Hudson High School graduation. The stands were overflowing with very proud parents and extended family members. And representing the board at graduation on Saturday were President Var Van Lunen, who spoke, and then Vice President Tom Holland and Board Member Pat German, who both had graduating seniors this year. So that's, that's very special. An interesting note about this graduating class, and there are many, but this is just one. They started off as 262 kindergartners. 391 started at 262. So they grew by 49% to graduation. That's a little scary. So if we look at our kindergarteners this year and even think of the type of growth that we could have, we certainly hope it's not 49% because our kindergarten class this year, starting in September, a little more than theirs at 262, was 459 students. So significant growth from kindergarten to graduation and it was great to see all those proud parents and families and kids who are very jubilant. And thank you to all the parents who did the after-graduation party, it was very significant, all the work that goes into that. It's quite, quite impressive with all the, the work.
Thanks, Mary. We are on the reports section of the agenda. The first item under reports is the 2011-12 Board Committee Membership. I'd like to read through that for people who don't have the, the information in front of them. The Finance Committee will be chaired by Lynn Robson, also the Board Treasurer. Sitting on the Finance Committee with Lynn will be Brian Bell and Dan Chernahoy. Facilities and Grounds will be chaired by Tom Holland and joining Tom on that committee will be Mark Kaiser-Schott and Lynn Robson. The Learning and Program Development Committee will be chaired by Barb Van Lunen. Also on that committee with me will be Brian Bell and Pat German. And finally, on the Personnel Committee, that will be chaired by Mike, Mark Kaiser-Schott and joining Mark on the Personnel Committee will be Tom Holland and Dan Chernahoy. So that is our committee lineup for the upcoming year. All right, and next under reports is the High School Learning for the Future. Mary, are you going to start us on that conversation?
I'm just going to start off as Laura Love and her team come forward to report the second part of this. You remember last meeting, you had the first two parts and now we'll go into three and four and the final wrap-up. We will be looking at the board taking action on the proposal as the first topic for action and I'll address some more additions at that time.
Is this on? Is that on?
It's on power.
Up, yeah.
Okay, I'm just going to get started off with the overview and then turn it over to Scott Huffman and Kim Powers, who were co-chairs for the Project-Based Learning component. They'll give you the proposal from the Project-Based Learning Study Team and then I'll return up here with some members of the Small Learning Community Study Team and stay for a wrap-up and questions. So the first part is, and we went over this last month, we really take a look at the vision for high school, or, sorry, the Hudson School District 2025 Strategic Plan and believe that the four components that we have will really help us achieve the vision for our students in the, in the coming years, even starting next year. So we really believe that the small learning communities, project-based learning, the transitions, and of course, I'm forgetting one. Advisories? Is that Meg Heaton? Thank you. We've already got our advisory, advisors for the advisory program ready and Wendy Langer and Chuck Bublitz are working on curriculum for that. So we're very excited to begin that in the coming year and some of the components that you'll hear tonight, especially from Project-Based Learning, in the coming year and then a five-year implementation plan for all four components. So at this time, I would like to show you that Project-Based Learning you'll see in the proposal will be at the classroom level, in all classrooms, at the course level as a separate course, and then you'll see some components that we believe will help bring it to every student through senior project for graduation. And then small learning communities, if you think of small learning communities a little bit like Strive, small learning communities are small groups of students and staff that work together to meet the students' needs and interests and to plan for the future. So we plan to have freshman academy or two and then 10th through 12th grade academy examples that we'll, we'll bring to you when we bring up the proposal. At this time, I'll turn it over to Kim Powers and Scott Huffman.
Hi. Sorry, allergies. So we were the co-chairs for the Project-Based Learning Study Team and we just wanted to let you know kind of like the big idea of Project-Based Learning. And the idea is, is that kids have an ownership of their high school experience, that they're studying things that matter to them and that they're learning together and then taking that learning and sharing it with other people. And then this is a list of the people that were our team members. So we had a wide variety of people who were working with us. We had high school teachers, middle school teachers, parents, students from the ninth grade and the 10th grade and also an eighth grade student joined us and then also parents. And we also had John Potter, who was a community member, join our team. As a description or definition of Project-Based Learning, it's basically an instructional approach where you're using authentic learning activities to engage students. So instead of me telling kids, you know, the information, instead they're engaged and they're doing something where they're learning from that experience. The aim of the approach is for students to design a project in response to something that matters to them. So they come up with a question or a prompt or a problem and then their job is to figure out how they're going to solve that problem. So they have to come up with the ideas, they have to come up with the plan to attack that solution, find out if that solution is viable, and then present that to other people. So it's really real-world skills that they're, they're using. It's also learning that's student-centered and that is self-directed. So the kids pick what they want to learn about and then they're responsible for that The purpose of the Project-Based Learning is to really use 21st century skills in the classroom and allowing kids to be self-directed and active learning. So they're active participants in the process. They're not just sitting there regurgitating what a teacher has told them. They're actually engaged and doing the work. The idea is to change the way students learn and to get them actively engaged in the process so they're investigating, researching, and then sharing. I asked one of my students why they liked Project-Based Learning and she said it's creative and it gives them more opportunities to learn. So instead of students having to fit into a box that we label them as student and this is how you act and this is what you do, they're actually now putting, putting kids in charge of identifying what they want to learn, creating a plan for that and becoming independent and responsible for their learning, which provides them with more opportunities than what we currently provide them with. Then we have some staff perspectives. These are two science teachers that responded to what, why they would like Project-Based Learning in their classrooms and because it's a hand-on, minds-on approach and it also requires non-traditional assessment techniques to be used. So after we researched all of this, we kind of started thinking about how do we want to implement this in our high school. And Phase One, which we would hope to implement next year, would be to continue projects like project, or continue project-based classes like Project Lead the Way. Provide staff with some more professional development opportunities. I'm pretty sure I'm teaching a summer academy class this summer. And to provide in services for, for teachers to get more equipped to have Project-Based Learning in their classrooms. Also to teach traditional classes with Project-Based Learning embedded in them. For the past eight or nine years, I've taught Young Adult Lit and my whole kind of concept of that class has been project-based. So throughout the class, they're creating a visual journal which shows their, their learning and their growth and they're in charge of figuring out how that works. So to continue to have classes like that to be offered to students and then also to use, start using maybe some supplemental curricula such as Piece Jam and DI, which Liz talked about earlier, in current courses. And then to start to create a Project-Based Learning course, which is standalone. Or, so instead of students coming up and wanting to do independent studies with us, we have a Project-Based course in which they design what they want to learn and then they tend, they spend a semester creating that project and doing that project with a teacher mentoring them. I'm going to turn it over to Scott.
Kim did a great job of explaining really Phase One and one thing I'd like to maybe just do quickly is take a step back and really recognize that committee that worked so hard with us. We, and just really recognize a couple of places locally that you might know about that we saw and some of the things that are in this proposal are patterned after. Some of the things from the School of Environmental Studies in Apple Valley, we went to visit that school a couple of different times, as well as the St. Paul Conservatory, the Conservatory School for Performing Arts. Both of those schools really have some great Project-Based Learning components to them that we're going to pattern and use to successfully implement it at our school. So, and what a, what a fun night here. I mean, man, sitting through all of those, those recognitions. I mean, the, the first one, DI, Project-Based Learning. And in fact, Liz wanted to be here for this, but she was at the choir concert and as she was leaving, she said, "And remember to say that the DI kids, you know, the, the reason they like it is it's Project-Based Learning. It's learning disguised as fun." And, and that came from some of those students because we were talking about Project-Based Learning. And then the next one, you know, the, just the, the metals production class. That's a clear example of Project-Based Learning in a current class that we currently have that we want to make sure we get more of in all of our classes. And so that's really kind of the goal of Phase One is to make sure all of our staff members are better equipped to lead Project-Based Learning classes, or components in their regular classes. But then I, I want to just segue then into the High School the Future and the, you've seen this already in talking about advisories and, and you'll see it a little bit later when we talk about small learning communities. But the goal, from the left-hand side to the right-hand side, is to really grow our students' capacity to understand Project-Based Learning and to participate. And one thing Liz would have said tonight is our, our hope is to have that grow from nine through 12, but also theoretically in a longer, larger scope, is to really have Project-Based Learning embedded K-12. So our students who are, are learning Project-Based Skills all the way through the system. And so that's, that's the, really the picture here that we have is we want to make sure you see that Project-Based Learning will be in small learning communities, it'll be in the ninth grade, ninth grade small learning communities, and then continue to grow as those students go into their 10th through 12th small learning communities. Moving on to Phase Two, and Phase Two will be a multi-year project because we're going to need to continue to improve and tweak our, our Project-Based Learning courses that we want to implement in Phase One, but we also want to expand and pilot a J-term opportunity for students. The School of Environmental Studies has what they call intercessions. They have a term, a typical term, and then they have about a 12-day intercession, which teachers decide to teach an atypical course. This is where they go climb Mount Kilimanjaro or go to the Boundary Waters. You know, there's lots of different things that, that that school does. And we just want to make sure our students have an opportunity to maybe take a look and a, and a break and do some real Project-Based Learning things that they wouldn't necessarily be able to do because they just take one J-term class and focus on that all day for a short period of time. So that's really Phase Two with the, with, with the addition of the Senior Exhibit Projects. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit more about that in Phase Three because we don't really know how all of this will look right today. We have an idea, but we really know that it's going to continue to evolve over the years. And we really want to make sure that our seniors have some sort of culminating activity, some sort of exhibition project where they get to say, okay, this is, this is what I want to research, this is what I want to present, this is what I want to learn about. And they really look to, and, and did you already hear from Transitions? You did. So the, some of, some of the difficulty our learning teams had was trying to operate in a box, knowing full well that they're all going to really mesh together. So the Transitions piece for the seniors really will look like, okay, what's it going to look like when I'm going out to a job site or a work site for the last quarter of my high school career and I'm not in very many classes? So those are the, those are the proposals that we have for Phase Two and Phase Three. And so this is the time when Kim and I can maybe answer any questions that you might have.
Dan?
Hi there. Thanks for the presentation. It sounds very exciting, innovative. I guess what's coming to my mind is, as you're talking about learning and rolling out these different phases, is there some school districts, you talked about a couple of school districts in the city, the Conservatory, are there some proven models or schools where this has sort of been rolled out through all these different phases and we can sort of see what a end result looks like or is it so innovative that we're going to learn as we go?
You know, I, I think it's a little bit of both. We did, I neglected to say that we went to Nutriae High School. Nutriae High School has about 4,000 students, so they have about 1,000 in their senior class. And they, they have a senior project that we're talking about where they really have students interning at jobs in the Chicagoland area. They've got like 200 of their 1,000 students in the senior project, so it's not mandatory, it's not completely chosen, the chosen path, path for students because the students that are in a high number of AP classes can't do that senior project because it really interferes with the, the testing cycle with the AP courses, but they, they have a senior project light where the students are at school for maybe half the day for taking one or two AP courses and then they go out and do that senior project. So, yeah, I would say that we're trying to be innovative because it's, it's new and different for Hudson High School, but there are several examples that we've seen that are successful, helping students really become more real-world savvy while they're in high school, getting them prepared for all the things that we have in our HSD 2025.
And I think, I think part of it is, is we've gone to all these different places and seen the best and we pulled the best from them and are trying to create something that's going to work here for Hudson. And so I can't say that there's any one school we could go to and say, that's going to work here, we're just going to copy that. Because we're, what we're trying to do is pick and choose the best of the best and make sure that it's going to work for here. So, yeah, there isn't one that's completely done and we can just steal it and run with it because we're trying to make it really new for here and what's going to work best for our students in our community. So, you know, something like Nutriae where they have 4,000 kids, we don't have 4,000 kids. So how, we're going to try to blend the best of everything that we've seen into what we think is going to work the best for our students.
Tom?
Sorry, Mark. As, as I think you know, I'm a very strong advocate for this and I, I just visualize that this is really real-world. This is when you get into the world, you're independent, you're critical thinking, you're problem-solving, you're having to negotiate. I mean, there's just, that's the world and, and I think this is tremendous. A lot of what you've done, from what I understand, in terms of getting counsel and advice and so forth, has been from other high schools that have a model in place. I'm wondering if there was any approach to any, any universities or colleges from that side, you know, kind of getting their advice, either from you and your committee or from any of the models of the high schools that already have it in place that you're aware of?
From my, well, from my perspective, and this might not be actual truth, but a lot of colleges aren't as innovative as we are at the high school level. And there, a lot of them are still direct instruction, lecture, that kind of thing, depending upon the curriculum that you're in.
So we didn't spend a lot of time looking at colleges because this is something that's kind of exploding at the high school level. And we're trying to push change at the upper levels of education. So, I don't know, do you, would you agree with that?
One, one other thing. Principal Love's old-school Lodi has a great model of project-based learning that they utilize. And so we've also seen and talked to the teacher that runs that, as well as, you know, Laura's got just a wealth of, of experience with that. So she's been very helpful for us to learn about that model as well. And so there are pieces in Phase Two and Three that talk about that, actually, the, the, the project-based learning course that we want to implement at the end of Phase One there. That's really been proven in, in different schools, but also some here in Wisconsin.
Oh, thanks, Mark. My, my question is for, for Kim. I heard you earlier give an example of a, of a traditional class with a, a project-based learning embedded. And could you just repeat that for my benefit?
Yeah, sure.
That'd be great.
So I currently, well, currently, school's out, but I have been teaching young adult Lit for the past eight or nine years. And it's a Lit class, and I use young adult, obviously, young adult Lit with my students. But what I do is I have them create a visual journal. Cindy mentioned it because I talked to her about it because I think it would work really well with her kids. And so we kind of adapted it for them. But it's a, a project where they have to figure out, what does it mean to be a young adult? And so it's individual, each kid comes up with their own way of creating that and their own way of thinking through that process, using the text that we talk about in class and various other sources as their guide. And so they're each responsible for coming up with how are they going to create a final product. So it's not true project-based learning because I'm giving them the prompt, but it's a step in the right direction. I don't know, does that answer your question?
Absolutely, helps a lot, thank you.
And if I could brag about Kim for a minute. The authen, authenticity of the assessment for her visual journal project. Kids really get to know themselves, they get to be reflective in their learning. This project that many of our students do really is a tribute to Kim's teaching style and really, the students love it and they, they really benefit from it. So it's just a snapshot of what we want to try to get in more or all of our classes.
I have one comment. So, thanks for sharing that. So I'm a big believer in the project-based learning as well, the relevancy. And my, my only concern always is for, for this is just the rigor. Is that, Kim, not concerned in your classroom, but I, I can see that there's a potential that this could become a, you know, not have the rigor that we want in our educational system. And that's, that's, that's my concern. I'm sure it can be handled, but just something I just want to, you know, communicate.
I think that's why we're really pushing in all three phases to make sure that we have training for staff and to make sure that we're, we're really doing the best that we can for kids. Because we don't, we want them to be successful, and we think that this is one way that's going to help them be successful after high school. So our goal is to give our kids the best tools we can to help them succeed post-secondary. And so I think that's one of our writing, I mean, big focuses, is to make sure that we don't drop the ball and that we're doing the best for our kids.
And Brian, if I could just say, I think that's a fair concern. You know, we're talking about how we've done education, and now we're changing it, and boy, that's scary. You know, that's scary. How, how are we going to assess and are we going to lower that bar? But we've talked about that, and we're going to maintain that high excellence bar while still innovating in the classroom, so.
And I think, sorry, I think project-based learning is another way to actually increase the rigor because we're, you know, asking kids to do more than what they're currently doing and to, to go farther, to go deeper in their learning instead of just wider. So from my perspective as a teacher, it's more, it's more difficult to have project-based learning in your classroom. And my kids hate me the first, you know, month of the semester because I'm not telling them what to do. And they have to figure it out, and they have to be innovative and creative and go beyond what they're usually, what their, you know, expectation usually is for them. And so I, I see it as a tool to push our kids farther.
So I, I have no concern within your classroom. I am concerned in classrooms that maybe the last day of school, there's two hours, instead of doing something educational, someone, you know, there's, you know, I think we just have to be concerned about that, about, you know, to make sure that in every classroom there's rigor and buy with it. Because in the real world, projects, projects are, you know, pass and fail. Projects, you know, all of us in our, in our business life or other parts of our life, project-based learning is, is life, but also it's, it's rigorous, and there's a, a bar you have to raise in, in order to be successful. And I just want to make sure that's implemented. I'm not concerned about your classroom, right? But I'm concerned about other classrooms, so. That's my, that's my point. And you don't need to elaborate anymore on that, so.
I just want to add a couple of things, and my team's going to come up anyway, so if I can. Because I, I'd like to give you a couple of examples about project-based learning projects that were rigorous, connected to the post-secondary level, and things that bring something back to the community. So something that I saw this year in the Project Lead the Way courses, Dan Wieland and Derek Shaka had students who were in separate classrooms in the same course in one of their Project Lead the Way courses. And they required those kids to engineer a product with a, a team member who was not in their class. They had to figure out their method of communication with somebody outside of their class. They did not get time together. And then they had to put a product together and assess it with a journal, written journal, and then also a digital journal that the, the teachers met with them one-on-one. And so when I was observing the class, I asked one of the students, "Why do you think you're doing this?" And he said, "Well, if I decide to be an engineer, and I'm in the United States, I might have to work with somebody in Asia, and I won't have the opportunity to be with them while I'm working on a project with them." That, I think, came from one of our freshmen. It was a real-life example. I think it was very rigorous. They, they clearly knew the relevancy of what they were learning, and I thought that was very exciting in the way that they were using technology. One of the students in Lodi who was in a project-based learning course was selected to take a UW-Madison course in his, at the end of his sophomore year. And what he did was work for Electronic Theater Controls. And the C, the CEO of Electronic Theater Controls asked about five high school-age students doing project-based learning for his company in the summer to do a variety of things. He had the ideas, and then the kids kind of chose which idea that they wanted to, to pursue. The, the one idea that I'm very familiar with was to assess the level of energy used in every room in this 500-member company. And at the end of the summer, the student had to propose ways of saving energy and saving costs to the company. And he had to propose that in front of the CEO and all the members of the board. And, you know, that's coming from a sophomore in high school. He did earn UW-Madison credit in doing so. And then the third, the third example of project-based learning that, that many of our students had the opportunity to do in Lodi was with a three-week foreign exchange. Each of the kids chose a piece of their exchange, component of their exchange, culture, language, and then brought that back to educate others in our community about that other culture. And some of the, the examples of students doing the projects for their project-based learning course through this travel abroad was to bring peace to the world through educational travel. So I think some of those, they had to make multiple presentations in front of the United Methodist Women and the Rotary and their colleagues in, in the classrooms and the school board as well. So I think we definitely need to, to make sure that what we're asking of students or what they're choosing is rigorous and worth the credit that we award them at the end of the course. But also, when we embed it into the courses that they're currently taking, I think it does increase the rigor because it's asking the kids to take ownership of the learning and transform it into something that's their own versus memorizing it and learning it for a test that they then forget and don't use again. So those are the goals, I think, of the project-based learning component of high school learning for the future. Thank you. I think what we'll do, I'll introduce the people up at the table first. And each of them has a little part of our presentation on small learning communities. The first person to my right, far right, is Ms. Teresa Spate, and she was one of our parent members of the study team. Josh Halverson, you've met before, one of our physics teachers and the co-chair with me on the small learning communities. Lisa Watkins, another science, physics, and this year, geology, astronomy, or meteorology teacher. And we did have others, people other than science teachers on our team, so you'll see that in a minute. And then sophomore student leader, really, Sarah Cryer, to my near right. And again, each of them will have part of the presentation tonight. Josh has an integral part, as you can see, he's the resident expert on quotes. And, you know, most of the time, we do include a quote from, from someone who's nationally, internationally known. But I think this really captures what small learning communities are all about. And as I mentioned earlier with Strive, it's really about constructing relationships, making sure we're meeting the needs of the students both academically and socially, and helping them prepare for the future. The team, the team was made up of, just like all four teams, a wide variety of people, community members, high school staff members, middle school staff members, students. And, and we had a wide representation of different departments that you can see, and, and then business members as well. Our definition, this, this is something that we spent some time coming up with our own definition. This was part of our research, what's the most effective size of a small learning community? So the first paragraph there, each small learning community in a school where it's most effective is between 250 and 400 students. That's a, a little different than, than Strive, that's an alternative learning community. But that's where, group that works closely with a core group of teachers and other support staff or resources in the building. They develop a personalized learning environment focused on the needs and interests and aspirations of the students. And really, the team of teachers collaborates on what those kids need and how they're performing. So a lot of data is used in how well our students are succeeding. And a, a place that we visited recently, and we'll, we'll take our team for the freshman academy back to, is St. Louis Park High School. They've been working closely with the Search Institute to look at the results of their academies. And they have only had a ninth-grade academy for five years, academies. And they'll be expanding their work into the 10th through 12th grade in the coming year, too. So we hope to learn alongside of them as well as learn from them. And then part of our, our budget will be to help design the curriculum to meet the needs of the students in each of the learning communities. The freshman curriculum will be a little bit more generic, but will be flavored with what we think will be the future learning communities from 10th through 12th grade, so that those students have an experience with it before they have to select which of the academies they would be going into in 10th grade. So the purpose, I think we've, we've addressed a couple of times. It's grouping students into small learning communities to personalize learning and really, just in general, to make the school feel smaller, to help each student find a niche, both academically and socially, and then also to plan for the future. The, the big challenge for us in the Small Learning Community Study Team was logistics, will-be logistics for the future. Where are we going to house each of these academies? For the most part, it'll be a core part of their day when they'll be in the academy, and they'll also have access to electives. But an example of location for the freshman academies would be that we'll probably locate our freshman academies on the west side in the old district office lo, area location because we have regular classrooms there and we have science classrooms there as well. Also gives them a feel for, this is kind of our area. It may be that during the first half of the day, that'll be our, our morning freshman academy, and the second half of the day, in the same rooms in the after, the afternoon academy. The schedule, we want to have some flexibility, but also some cohesion in the academy, so the schedule will be pretty, the freshman's schedule will probably look pretty much like it does now. They have five core classes, including FIAED, and then they'll be able to take electives in foreign language and FIAED and music and that sort of thing. The curriculum really needs to be worked on by a whole team of teachers. And this is something that we heard from the St. Louis Park staff members, that the kids really appreciate that the curriculum connects from math to science and from science to social studies and so on. And also that student projects or student assessments are either worked together or they're not happening all at the same time. The benefits, we believe, from, for students and staff member are increased collaboration for both students and staff. Relationships will be strengthened, both between staff and students, and students and students, and staff and staff. And research shows where the student, where the staff member relationships are strong, students perform better. We believe we'll have an improved sense of community and membership to the school. We believe we'll have results of increased attendance and decreased behavioral issues. We think kids will understand the relevance of the content. You'll, you'll hear a little bit more about the 10th through 12th grade academy ideas, but we'll be studying that for our community and deciding implementation as we move forward. And then getting kids connected to their future goals and pathways. And this was where we really tie in with the transition study team. And then we really feel that the freshman academy will be a, a support for transition from middle school to high school, and that the 10th through 12th grade academies will have strong curricular content that will focus on the student's future, and that will help students transition beyond Hudson High School. Some of the senior projects, we believe, either will be, will be awarded credit at the university level, or they'll be things that they'll, they're exploring for their future as well. So at this point, I'm going to turn this messy grid concept map over to Josh. He really created this based on our, our discussions. And this is probably when we got over our big hurdle of how will this really happen? So you'll see components of this in each of the phases coming up, but this is the big small learning community concept map that Josh came up with.
So if you're a concrete sequential, I apologize. I'm an abstract random, so this makes sense to me. But what we are getting to is with our groups, we kind of, we're getting to points where we're jumping from one spot to another and trying to get them to connect. And this is what I attempted to do, but it, it just kind of reads like a, a flow chart or a web or concept map. If we look at the, the next slide, we kind of have a, a five-year plan. And our first one would be Phase One, which would be next year. So we have advisories already going this year, you know, when this is, when this is in effect. And that is to actually start to plan with the freshman academies. So we have all of our freshman core teachers, maybe some advisories meeting, and figuring out what we're going to do, where we're going to do with the structure, the nuts and bolts of everything. And while that's going on, we'll have another team studying, you know, what's going to And while that's going on, we'll have another team studying, you know, what's going to come after the freshman year, because they need somewhere to go into. So that would be our Phase One year. On Phase Two, this is an example of what a freshman may go through with the core classes that we thought most freshmen could track kind of from one class to the next. That way, teachers could communicate, students would be in kind of the same groups, so that projects that overlap, if we want to push hours together, you know, for all that flexibility. We thought science, the history, social studies, English, and then with math being kind of one that you can jump around, you know, maybe we can get that to fit, maybe we can't, but we kind of get that solid core, and we could either do that in the morning, or we could do that in the afternoon. So we have two groups, so we're not neglecting any electives, so electives are still able for freshmen to take as they normally would. So when we have the implementation for the freshman academy, this would also, on the next slide, be time to plan, and our thoughts as a committee is that maybe we should just try to do one 10th through 12th learning community first, and then add others in later that way, any bumps that we see, smaller group of people to work with, probably a better, you know, core going on there. So when we start planning, then I guess we could also be studying for maybe another two or three small learning communities, or whatever we decide to see to go there. On Phase Three, then, we'll have our first year in, so we need to evaluate our freshman academy, figure out what we can add to it, what flavors, what's coming in, what do we need to see, and then we can implement our first 10th through 12th academy. We have some kind of ideas, you know, STEM is huge, global learning, health and human academy, but to get to those, I think we need to go out to the community, go out to universities, see what resources we have in Hudson, and then find out what's a good fit for us. Phase Four, again, continued revision with the freshmen, and then the implementation of our 10 and 12 academies, again, focusing on all of our connections that we have. And then Phase Five is kind of that whole look at what's going on, review, make changes, see what's out there, you know, and hopefully by this point, we have it all figured out. And then Lisa's gonna.
While working on this, there was always some questions that we, as a group, came up with, and then we actually spoke with all of the primarily freshman-only teachers. And these were kind of the three, you know, other than the logistics end of things, these were the three main questions that kept popping up. And the first one is, you know, will all students have access to AP courses, electives? And that is an absolutely, and we don't want to shut any door for any student. We don't want, just because you're in this academy, you don't get to take music. No, we want to keep all the doors open for all students, so it doesn't matter which path they decide to go, all electives are available to all students. The second one is kind of that flexibility, you know, you get placed, a student gets placed into this academy, decides they kind of want to go there, they're there, and they're like, yeah, I don't think this is for me, can they switch? And that also, again, is absolutely, because part of the small learning community and the academy idea is that they are taking classes that are flavored towards their interests. So if they're interested in, you know, the health and human services, their classes will be kind of flavored in that aspect. You know, everyone still has to take algebra, but they might be taught algebra a little bit more differently, so that they kind of get their interest pushed into that class, so that they, you know, succeed there as well, so they can always, you know, move around as they see fit. And then the last one, the graduation requirements, they are still the same, and they will be the same as what we currently have. And I think perspectives, students, staff members, and parents. As far as being a staff member, I look at this as a huge opportunity. As Laura was kind of indicating, I've been kind of a catchall. I've taught a lot of different courses. This year actually was maybe only the second time where I've, you know, taught one course, and then I've actually had some students both first and second semester, just with the courses that I've changed. And I cannot express how much of an impact that has on me for helping students, because I get to know them first semester, and then usually it's, see you later, and then I get a new group, and I have to try and figure them out. Having the same group of students throughout the course of a year within one small community really helps me as a, you know, as a teacher, get to know them, not just as a, you know, teacher-student relationship, but really get to know them, so that I can understand maybe why, you know, they're having a bad day, or a bad week, or, you know, just be a positive role model for them. And then also, the interaction with other staff members, kind of right now, the only interaction I get is with my other, you know, science department teachers, and working in a small learning community, I'll have that access to speak with people on the east side of the building, finally, get their ideas, maybe see, you know, get their, you know, perspective, include more project-based learning from, within all those classes, maybe try to develop one kind of between a few classes. So just that collaboration piece, I think, would be huge between staff members as well. Sarah, do you want to talk a little bit about the student perspective?
Sure. Ms. Love kind of hit on a few of these things, but I would look forward to small learning communities personally, because it's going to create like a very individualized challenges, and it's going to encourage students to work a lot harder, because they're interested in what they're learning about. Everything's flavored to like, fit what they like, and they're going to be more excited about something that they have interest in. If nobody wants to go be a doctor, then they don't want to have to hear about science and English class. The small learning community setup is going to help us become accountable for each other, our staff members, and for our goals in the future. I think it's going to help me personally be better prepared for college, because, you know, throughout high school, students change what they want to be, I don't know how many times. I have no idea what I want to be, but if I got to choose a small learning community that would help me decide whether, you know, maybe math or science was the right fit for me, then it's going to help me narrow my options for my college career. It also, like we said, is going to help us take pride, and like, we're going to have a more cohesive feeling amongst the small learning community, like, within that community, you're going to have ownership of it. If you talk to any freshmen and ask them what houses they were in in middle school, they can tell you all three of them, and how many dodgeball tournaments they won, because they're, so they have so much pride in what they were, you know, who they were with, and where they were, and, you know, that's, that cohesiveness is really a positive environment to have, especially at the high school level, and I think it would really help students find themselves and find their niche. And in general, the learning and understanding of curriculum will be a lot better, because in classes, like, I would be in classes with people who are of the same aptitude, as well as like interests, you know, the discussions are going to be a lot more in-depth, they're going to be, you know, more exciting to hear about, because everyone's going to be involved, and everyone's going to have something to say about it. And there's not going to be the pressure of keeping the kids who might be falling behind, because this is not where they, you know, this is not the kind of classes they're interested or belong in. They're going to, you know, there's not the pressure of pulling them up ahead, or trying to race ahead with the kids who are excelling. And my only thing about it is, I'm just sorry that I'm not going to be there, I'm going to graduate when they're going to be in full swing.
And our parent perspective.
Hi, I'm Teresa Spate. I had three children at the high school this year, but I also have one in junior high, and I have one in elementary, so I'm looking forward to them moving up into the ranks. And let's see, I'm excited, I don't see a downside to a freshman academy, I just don't. The kids from the middle school come from smaller houses, and it's just a big culture shock being thrown into the big pond of Hudson High School. I think it would be good to have all the teachers collaborating, it would be good to have a little more adult-teacher contact, and just more of the adults that know your children as they go, you know, progress through the years. You know, and also, they come from St. Pat's, which is even smaller. And then as far as the career clusters, I think that's really exciting, too. I think that, you know, I have a son who's in 10th grade, and you just see a math-science engineer written all over him, and I think you could see, you know, with the community involvement, and this is broad picture here, so I don't know all the details, but you can see, you know, maybe an electrician, or the electrical engineer coming in and doing some real-world experience. I think as adults, I think learning for the sake of learning is ideal, and that's what we want, and kids just don't see that all the time, they just know they need the diploma, and they know they're gonna, they're just not engaged. And that's still the goal, but they're going to work, you know, just to, let me get my notes here straight. You know, they see classes more as, you know, maybe pointless and boring, and this way, if they're engaged in the process, they'll be more excited, and it's not just the diploma, it's what's happening afterwards. I've been honored to be on this committee, it's been great, and the things I'd like to say are that in spite of all the severe budget cuts, that they're, you know, they're being creative, and they want to serve the students, and help them make it a better high school. And the other thing is, is they're not jumping into just the newest trend, because we've looked at schools, and if you jump in without the planning, we don't want a failure here, and I think they know that. So I see them doing their homework and working that way, so I think it's pretty exciting.
All right.
Go ahead, John.
Again, I'm a tremendously strong advocate for this concept. The concept is absolutely right on. Whenever you can have a smaller group of individuals that are working together, they know each other better, there's more focus. As has been outlined by Sarah, Mrs. Spate, I think there's plenty of benefit for this. My question is more in the lines of logistics, in terms of thinking, just trying to think through this, what possibilities there might come of this, and that is, is that envisioning that there may be all of a sudden, an oversurge of interest in a particular academy, and if that were the case, do we have, do we have trained advisors that can handle that? That's a question. Is there a logistic problem potentially with that, secondarily, also with individual students that might be moving from one to another again? Is there a progress that's been made at a certain point where they might have to catch up in that area?
Very good questions, and those are, you know, a lot of the stumbling blocks, I think we'll have to move aside before we can really make sure that we're ready. Part of our plan to study what academies to implement are things like, what will really prepare kids for the future, and what are their interests, and what are their parents' interests, and what do we offer in this community by way of the economy and the businesses? And so our plan is to make sure that the kinds of academies that will be implemented in the 10th through 12th grade will have some equity in the amount of interests that they have. So we hope to avoid a very small community academy and a huge academy. If that does, if that does show up, I think what we'll be doing is continually replanning, and I mean, you know, the changes in technology and the economy as of late are so rapid, that I think our teachers will, the collaboration time will be key for those teachers to be kind of restructuring those. But we, that's part of the reason we're taking three years to implement more than one 10th through 12th grade academy, we really want to make sure they're the right ones for Hudson High School. Movement between, one of the things that we feel fairly strongly about is, you know, once you're in for that year, or at semester, would be the appropriate time to move, so that you're not behind. We still intend to have our courses aligned with each other, the flavors that we would have, or as Ms. Watkins talked about, algebra, having a health and human sciences focus. It'll be the kinds of questions that we ask, but they'll still be learning, you know, the Pythagorean theorem kinds of things. So the kinds of connections we have to the real world will be different in the problems that they solve, but we think that the movement shouldn't occur more than once a year, mid-year, or at the end of the year.
Other questions?
I would just like to say, as the newest board member here, coming in last year and just first hearing about HSD 2025, I had no concept, but I have learned, I've watched, I've went to the grade school, and I want to just, I'm really excited about it. My, I really do support this, and I want to thank Mary, and I want to thank the teachers, and the principals, and I think, and the principals are going to have, in my concept, are going to have a lot of work that they are doing and will be doing. I think the question that Brian asked about, you know, how are we going to make sure each teacher is up to here, and I think that will be on the shoulders of the principals, to be in the room, and to be watching, and so forth. So I'm not afraid of that, because I feel our principals are really up there and doing their job above any other principal. When I grew up, I was ever doing, the principal was the disciplinarian in my school, you know? And I don't, and that's not what you are, you are a leader for your teachers. And the other thing was about small communities staying with the teachers my kids have gone through, and I've been surprised that they have algebra, but they have two different teachers, you know, when it comes to semester. And when they do get the same teacher, they're usually very happy, it doesn't happen too often. And so then they had to learn what that teacher was all about when they started the next semester, and not only, you know, the teacher had to figure out, I mean, I didn't, the perspective of what you said, where the teacher has to now figure out every student in that classroom, so I'm excited about the thing of them being together a little more, so.
Thank you. Other questions? Dan?
Thank you, Madam President. It sounds very exciting. I'm struggling a little bit trying to get my arms around this, because in one way, you're saying we're going to be using a lot of the same classes and doing a lot of the same things, yet we're going to be building these academies around, I'm sensing somewhat subject career areas. One thing that, you know, my background is in the arts, and I'm trying to figure out where it is, you know, orchestra, you know, we're sort of committed to that program, band, you know, very vibrant choir program. Can you tell me a little bit how some of those programs, we had welding here with a really good program going, how do some of those classes fit into when I look at Global Learning, Health and Human Science Academy, you know, engineering?
Yeah, I think a lot of places that we looked at as well, almost all of them had like a performing arts academy as well, which, you know, those are ones, science background, those are ones that we kind of threw up there, but there's no reason to say that we don't have a, you know, literature-performing arts. And then the other thing is, you know, looking for just core areas, the core areas for a senior, I believe, is just English and history, you know, so that leaves another five periods open for electives, where, you know, the electives, we really want to keep open with that. Same with AP, you know, some students are taking all AP classes from art to physics, where they probably would be in different academies, there wouldn't be a restriction on, you know, you can't go there because you're in this academy. So as perhaps a student goes through, there's actually maybe even some dissolving, but maybe, you know, on those core ones, that's where they get their environment, where the teacher knows them, they have their students, that kind of core backbone.
Other questions?
I would just add to that, where some of the academies will have electives built in, like Project Lead the Way would be built into a STEM academy. If we decide a fine arts academy is right for Hudson High School, you know, some students will be taking that through elective, but some students would be in that academy. It would also have core courses connected to the fine arts, so it may enhance our fine arts even more. But we definitely don't want
But we definitely don't want to eliminate the options that the kids currently have, so we hope to expand on them even further.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick follow-up question, just on the facility side. I'm sure that's come up somewhere in discussion in terms of, you know, what we have with a current facility and how something like that, this type of a program would, you know.
We plan to put a few courses on the roof, and some in the yard. We do think that that's a barrier for us logistically, the facility and how it currently is, exists, but we also think that there are some options in our current facility where, you know, we have an upstairs on the east side, we have a downstairs on the east side, we have a west wing, we sort of have a back wing. So we feel like some of our academies will fit nicely into those sort of niches in the building. And again, students won't be in an academy seven periods a day, so they'll be moving to those elective areas like tech ed that won't, isn't able to move anywhere out of their current lab spaces. Hopefully that helps.
Any other questions?
Just two comments, maybe, Dan, to the question you raised about space. I, I know one of the things that we talked about intentionally when we started to talk about high, space, secondary space in the district, this work came first, because we knew that if we were gonna change how we delivered academic coursework, that was gonna influence what we think about when we think about more space in that secondary area. So I think this is, this is an important foundational element for that discussion. And the second thing, just for the board members, the Learning and Program Development Committee has had an opportunity to hear about these four streams for high school learning for the future, and, and we really do endorse them, and we think not only are they good and important pieces of work, but they're critical to delivering HSD 2025, so. Thank you.
Before my team leaves here, I just want to make sure that you know that, how much we appreciate the input from our parents, our business members, and, and certainly our, our student voices, and for students to give up time outside of the day when they're very busy, as you know, and also to, to give us input when they know they're not gonna directly benefit from it is outstanding, and so I, I want to applaud, actually, our teachers as well, because of all the amount of hours, and as, as Ms. Spate shared, the innovations they're ready to take on when they know it's gonna be more work have, has really been a celebration for us as a high school this year.
Thank you.
We have just a couple of, that last slide, Diane, if you could go back to that for just a moment, because I want to just mention the four components in their first phase, because you'll be voting on that tonight, so it's very important that I just quickly review. I think, yeah. It'll be the last slide. While she's clicking through that, as you just heard, the Small Learning Community first year component will simply be to plan the freshman academy. That will take us a good chunk of time. The staff members involved will be the core freshman teachers primarily. We will visit another school where they've been doing the ninth grade academy, and it's nearby, which is beneficial to us. The advisories will implement advisory for all ninth graders. So currently, we have over 20 teachers who have volunteered to be the first year advisory group. They will not only get trained in how to lead an advisory, but they'll also help plan the curriculum for that. And our student mentors will be trained, and we have selected over 100 juniors and seniors who will be helping guide our freshmen in multiple areas, both academics and social growth. They have already been asked to introduce themselves to the parents and the eighth graders in a personal letter, and so we're excited about how those upper level students are gonna lead our, our freshmen in their first year of transition. Our transition team will plan professional development for staff on the change cycle, and that will be done in August. And then project-based learning, the fourth component in the first year, will, will also, will begin to embed more project-based learning into our current courses, and will begin with a pilot project-based learning course, most likely taught by Ms. Powers. She will be running staff development for others in cooperation with Nancy Toll, who will be the technology side of the project-based learning summer academy course for teachers. So those are the first phase of each of the four components, and I think it's your last slide, there we go, is the total cost that we estimate for this current year is $28,275. I think I had mentioned in our last month's meeting, this year, our study teams were given $25,000 to visit other schools and implement our study plan, and then, so this is a little bit more than that, but most of that is professional development for our teachers that will happen this summer and throughout the year outside of the regular calendar expectations. This does represent all four components, and we expect the average of each year to be about $28,000 for the next five years, although in the fifth year, you'll see it's a decrease. Each year, we will bring back to you how are we doing, and what's our next year plan, and any budget that we would plan for that year. So it's not like you have to decide tonight on five years. You would just be asked to look at the concept of all four, and then also the first year implementation plan and budget. Do you have any questions related to that?
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you very much.
All right, Tim, an update on the 2011-13 state biennial budget.
Okay, thank you. As I'll start with the major news, which was late this afternoon, the Wisconsin Supreme Court ruled on the Circuit Court's granting of temporary relief on the Budget Repair Bill and the publishing of that bill, which would then turn into law. And what that means is that this then requires the Secretary of State to publish the bill, and then it will become law, and we expect that to happen this week. So that's the, that's the big news. As far as the, as far as the work on the budget, Joint Finance Committee has finished up their work, and they now have forwarded that, their, their joint bill to each house, and the, the Assembly is taking that up, and they're working through some things. One of the, one of the more recent developments was looking at what, what's called Wisknet, the Wisknet program. That program is a, and run by the UW system. It provides internet service to about 75% of public schools and about 95% of the libraries in the state. And what they were looking at doing is eliminating that program. What we're getting, the information we're getting is that would, that would cause our costs to go up roughly two to three times. So we see some dramatic increases there. Now, the more recent development there is that they, they're recommending that a, a study be done over the next couple of years, so they're backing off on elimination of that program. The other, some other developments there are expansion of the Choice and Charter, the voucher program, and, and that's, I think that is it for my update.
Any questions for Tim? All right. Diane, are there any citizens' requests to speak? All right, so we will move into Topics for Action. The first item under Topics for Action is the action item regarding what we just heard about from Laura Love and that team on high school learning for the future. Mary?
I just want to take us back two years ago, when we started to work on high school, high school of the future, and we started with a research team that was really to connect best practice high school models with 21st century learning skills and our strategic vision of HSD 2025. We spent a year studying, and then we moved that study to the high school to move forward. And as you see on page 46, I think, yep, Diane's got it up, this connection of the recommendations that came out of that first year were the four areas that you've heard over the last two board meetings, and moving those forward in, into more specifics, into an implementation plan. So they connect with the graduate learner outcomes, and certainly the strategic vision of HSD 2025 and moving it forward. Diane, if you go on to the next slide. We'll be asking for two actions, for you to consider two actions this evening. Our recommendation is that you endorse the multi-year conceptual plan that you see in front of you, and this is really the four components for further development. As Principal Love talked about, bringing that back each year for implementation for the next year after study and refinement of each of these components. You know, this is a very major work that has occurred in the district, and to, when we started this out, I never envisioned the second year that we would be this far, particularly having a new principal. So I can only commend Laura and her team, and all the community and business people and students, parents as well, teachers who have worked to move this to this level for us to be really starting implementation next year. And the model we're using is really supportive of rigor and relevance and relationships, really critical components for success at the high school. And by looking at schools that have been identified in the first year and then identified in the second year, looking at best practice, that's how we're going to implement this at a high, high level. Dan, I think you asked about, is there anyone who's done this, or maybe that was Tom, I'm not sure. No one that we know has taken all these four components and implemented them the way we see it, and I think Laura coined this by saying, we're gonna take those components, we're going to futurize them and Hudsonize them, and that's really aligning them with HSD 2025. So this is really implementation of this, but this is the conceptual plan. So we'd ask you to endorse the conceptual plan, bringing back each year what the next year of implementation and where we are with that. So the next slide is the second part of that action that we recommend to you, so Diane has it up, and that is really the implementation plan for next year, asking you to approve that and authorization to expend those funds to support that. So it's the multi-year conceptual plan for further development, and then this Phase One plan. This is landmark work. This is really moving a comprehensive high school into the next phase that's really going to support our students at a higher level, and we really don't know where this is happening to this level anywhere in the country. So we'd ask for your support of this.
Madam President, I would move the endorsement of the High School Learning for the Future Multi-Year Conceptual Plan and for, for further development, and to approve the High School Learning for the Future 2011-12 Implementation Plan.
Motion by Tom, is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Pat, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Good work. The second item.
Madam President, excuse me, can I just make a comment regarding what we just approved? I'm very supportive of this, but because, as Mary just described, this is a fairly major initiative for the school district, not only do I, as a board member, you know, want to stay in the loop of how this, you know, plan gets developed, but I think there should be possibly some additional community engagement to make sure that, you know, the parents of high school kids and folks at that level are fully plugged into what we're doing here, so that they're, you know, aware of, as we're progressing through this.
That's, that's an excellent point, and Laura alluded to that. That's exactly what some of the next phases are. So instead of coming to you and saying, these are the, say, the small learning communities that we're gonna implement, it's a matter of going out to the community and going out to the parents and our business community as well, to the university system, to the technical college system, and making connections and communicating and getting feedback, just exactly what you're talking about, Dan, to move that forward. So actually, I see this as a huge effort to do just that, and, and supporting, I know you support that as well.
All right. The next item under Topics for Action is the Student Transportation Contract. Nancy?
The board approved a budget reduction and reallocation plan a number of months ago. Part of that plan included the outsourcing of the duties of the District Transportation Specialist to Safeway, the district's transportation contractor. The outsourcing was recommended to save money and to eliminate duplication of services. And since board approval, Safeway has made significant investment in this transition. They have hired additional personnel, they have purchased equipment, and they have secured the appropriate training. And after the Fourth of July, Safeway should be generally operational in this transition. Separate from the outsourcing of the specialist duties, Mr. Erickson and I negotiated with Safeway a multi-year modification of rate increases, and Safeway recognizes the district's current budget constraints. As a result of the outsourcing of the specialist duties and the modification of rate increases, the district has achieved significant cost savings that Mr. Erickson will highlight. Because of Safeway's investment in the outsourcing and their willingness to significantly modify their rate increases, the administration is recommending a two-year extension of their contract with the district through June 30th, 2016. Aside from the money savings gained by the district, Safeway, in our opinion, has provided an exceptional level of service with an outstanding safety record and timely and courteous response to any problems or concerns that have been developed. So I'll turn that over to Tim for a few comments.
Yeah, as Nancy had mentioned, we're going to obtain some pretty substantial cost savings here in the contract. In the addendum, you can see for the first three years, in 11, 12, there's a 0% increase, whereas the previous contract, we had a three, three and a quarter percent increase. Second year was a 1%, and again, a three and a quarter previous to that, and then the third year, one and a half percent, and again, we had a three and a quarter. And the recommendation is to extend the contract into 15 and 16, and there, we're looking at something indexed to the CPI. So if we, if we add up the cumulative cost savings, the personnel changes as well as the contract savings, the percentage increases each year, we're looking at about, about a quarter of a million dollars over the first three years of the contract. So again, substantial savings.
Are there any questions? All right. If someone would be interested in making a motion to approve this contract addendum.
Madam President, I would make the motion to approve the contract addendum with Safeway Bus Company, and including the extension of the contract for an additional two years per the terms on the addendum.
Motion by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Again, good work. All right, we are at the consent agenda, or the consent items on the agenda. If someone is willing to make the motion, including the language for the expenditures. Brian, we normally count on you to be ready for this one.
Madam President, I move that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,293,953.03, as well as the other items on the consent, consent agenda.
The motion is by Lynn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Consent agenda items are passed. Committee reports. Brian? No? Brian, no, Lynn, oh my goodness, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Madam President. The Finance Committee.
Madam President, the Finance Committee met on June 7th. The first item on the agenda was the policy to define the, to define the presentation of the fund balance. This revision is, of the policy is to comply with the changes required by GASB 54. The accounting changes require further definition of the funds into five categories: non-spendable fund balance, restricted fund balance, committed fund balance, assigned fund balance, and unassigned fund balance. The second item on the agenda was the 2011 and 2013 biennial budget, which Tim reviewed with us earlier in the agenda. The third item on our agenda that evening was the debt refinancing. The Board approved in a special meeting on June 7th. The Board approved the refinancing of a 1997 debt issue at an interest rate now of 1.63%, which will result in a savings to the district over the next six years of $1,63,938. And the last item on our agenda that evening was the Transportation Contract Addendum, which was previously approved.
Thank you, Lynn, are there questions? The next committee report is Learning and Program Development. And we met, in our, our most recent meeting, we got an update from Principal Love on the High School Learning for the Future, the project-based learning and small learning communities that we heard about and acted on this evening. Tracy Habashaline came to the committee and talked with us about Raider logo consistency and branding, which seems like an interesting topic, but there's an opportunity to sell some Raider logo branded items in a local retail establishment. And it turns out, we don't have any consistency in our brand, in our, in our brand. And so, Tracy's doing some work with some other folks in the district to get that to a single brand item. And then, the final item on our agenda was Cory McIntyre updated us on some work that's been going on in his team around curriculum for reading interventions and what they plan to do in the upcoming year in terms of implementing that. So, if there are no questions, I will move on to the Facilities and Grounds Committee. Tom?
Facilities and Grounds Committee met June 13th, and we had three agenda items. In a continued effort to look for efficiencies in our utilities, we heard of a report regarding the relamping and delamping of T8 fluorescent lighting, first of all, in EP Rock Elementary School. And then, we plan to, this is a project for the summer, and plan to offer that or look, look at that and continue to look for savings and efficiencies throughout the district, which will amount to, I think, a fair size of savings. We'll be, as I'd said, relamping, meaning that we'll be changing the current fluorescent type of lighting out to a more efficient lighting. And we will be removing some lighting as well that really is more than what's needed according to standards. The end result of this for EP Rock alone will be a savings both in demand and energy of approximately $4,770 for EP Rock. In addition to that, along the same vein, we had heard a report about another summer project, which will be the middle school upgrade lighting. Again, we'll be changing out lighting there in the pool, which will actually increase the illumination and increase the efficiency, therefore, increase the savings. So, we're very excited about the work that our properties, staff and department are doing under the leadership of Jim Staskel. And that at, at the middle school pool will allow, again, into savings in demand and energy at approximate costs of just a little bit over $4,000 in that area. The payback for the, um, the pool changes will be about four and a half years if and when we receive a rebate from the energy supplier that should move that down to about a 3.3-year payback. And the EP Rock payback is even more, is even better news in terms of actually being a 9.6-month payback. So, that's a pretty rapid payback for what our investment will be. Then, we'd heard in the second gen, agenda item regarding the capital projects for the summer. I won't go through each one. I can certainly list them if you'd like in the future. I can put them on the website, whatever. But they do have to do with roofing, high school safety, communications programs, new lockers for the middle school. A secure entrance both at the middle school and at Prairie is on schedule. And then, the Rivercrest Safety Communications Program that we'll, they'll be implementing. And I already mentioned the pool lighting and the relamping and delamping at EP Rock. So, I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Tom. And the last committee report is Personnel. Mark?
Thank you, Mark. Personnel Committee met just last night. We began with a staffing update from Nancy Sweet. We have a number of classes, I think about seven or eight in each category that are both under-enrolled and over-enrolled. And Nancy is monitoring those closely as she always does. It is very much a moving target at this point. Changes significantly over the summer. But Nancy, again, is on top of it as always and will make those adjustments as needed. Right now, everything is somewhat status quo as far as enrollment numbers from, from last year, other than those, those classes being flirting with the guidelines up and down. There's going to be some discussion of adjustment in our, our vision services. You may remember earlier, we had decided to contract with CISA for those services. There have been some increase in some of the enrollments. So, we're going to be looking at some other options, including possibly, once again, providing vision services here in the district. So, that's, that's ongoing. And then, we had a wide variety of revisions with regard to student transportation. I guess I would characterize most of these as, as housekeeping issues. Most of the policies hadn't been revised since, I think, about 1995. So, there were a lot of things that had to be tweaked and updated. And I think most of those will probably be on the district's website shortly for, for viewing. We talked, we have a teacher employee handbook advisory committee that I believe today was the last day for those members to join that. So, we're enthusiastic. We had quite a number of teachers that decided to participate in that in helping us to formulate our, our teacher handbook, which is obviously of particular importance given the new, the new environment that we'll be operating in. So, we look forward to seeing the progress on that. And then, lastly, we had a, a closed session covering a, quite a wide variety of confidential personnel items.
Question?
Madam President, I just, I don't, we should take any questions for this committee, but I failed on one agenda item to report. And that was a closed session. We were, we continued to look at and look for public property purchase possibilities and options. And I, I just want to make sure that that's noted because obviously, it's a, it's a, it's a pertinent topic and certainly one, as you've heard tonight, about space needs and so forth, that we're very much are, very busy about looking into, so.
Thanks, Tom. So, that concludes the committee reports. We are now at item 11 on the agenda for adjournment to closed session. For those who may still be here, we will be returning to open session for an action item. But if one of the board members would make a motion, including the language in item 11 as amended.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat Suits 19.85, paring 1, B, C, E, F, and G, to consider employment contracts with specific coordinators and supervisors, to consider final layoff notices for specific employees, to consider negotiation and mediation strategy with the teachers bargaining unit and negotiation strategy with the two other collective bargaining units in the district to confer, oops, excuse me, that was, board concerning strat, uh, board concerning strategy to be adopted by, by the Board with respect to litigation in which the district is likely to become involved for preliminary.
Yep, that's, so skip all the way to four preliminary at the end of that, second to the last line.
Oh, I've got to follow the punctuation here.
All right. We're not doing this.
Oh, that's right, I chopped a sentence.